So, good evening, everyone. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Gilman Square Civic Advisory Committee. And apologies for those sirens. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Do you want to note for the record that we currently do not have a quorum and therefore we won't take any official action, including voting, including sort of our consensus vote on the minutes or the meeting summary from last time? So we'll hold on that until we have a quorum. We do expect we'll have a quorum of attendees coming up. All right. Can you all share my, see my screen now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic. Okay, and we have a quorum. Excellent. Okay. So just since it's been a while, in case anyone needs a refresher on what the buttons are, mute and unmute, video on, off, and share screen. If anyone is calling in on the phone and you want to speak, try star six. That should allow you to speak when you're on a phone. Okay. So I'm jumping right to our agenda for this evening. We do have a form of the group here. So we can walk this through, but we have approval of the summary from last time, public comment, and then really getting into discussion around all of the engagement activities that have been happening. And then thinking about sort of where we take that from here into the next few months. So I'll start with, starting with the approval of the meeting summary. I apologize for getting it out to you all so late. If anyone would like more time, please speak up and we can hold on that. I tried to copy in all of the notes from, we had taken down at the last meeting and organized them a little bit more by theme. So if anyone would, would like more time to review that before we take that decision, let me know. If not, is everyone comfortable with the summary that was sent out? I see lots of nodding. If anyone is uncomfortable, speak now.
I'm comfortable.
And we will publish that summary to the website right away so that it's out there. And it basically, mostly it's the same notes that we had from us that were in, already ready on the website. Excellent. Next is a public comment period. If you would like to make a public comment, I'll jump back to this. There's two ways to do that. You can either write an question into the question box or raise your hand and we will call on you.
Rachel. I'm keeping an eye on the attendees. There's one attendee and so far they have not raised their hand.
Okay. So we will come back to another public comment period at the end. Next up is to do a review just of all the engagement activities that have been happening. And what I've got here in terms of structure is just that I'll go through just the list as a reminder of everything that we've been doing for the last two months. We've seen small groups of members of the CAC at those events throughout the last couple of months. And then what I have is sort of space so we can go through and add notes from the folks who were at each of those activities. And then we've got one that is still coming up. So first, this is sort of this big picture summary of everything that's been going on. We started with March 14th for that opening virtual workshop. Forty people more or less attended that night. Then in place of our April meeting, a few of us were out tabling. I was estimating somewhere around 20 interactions with different individuals. Same with the tabling during open studios. I would also estimate that around that 15 to 20 mark. Then we had the midday workshop, which was a repeat of the March 14th. And there we had about five people who came. It was, it was a good little group, good discussion. We tabled at the Fabville Open House. Had fewer conversations around this, around five interactions, but it was a really good event. Otherwise, lots of activity in the, in the Fabville space of the high school. We had a really good in-depth meeting just Monday this week with the D lab students at the high school. There were four students and two faculty members as part of that. And then I wanted to give you an update on where we are on the online survey. We've had 51 responses on the online survey. That includes, I entered all of the paper survey responses that we've gotten at the various tabling events. So that is inclusive of all of the notes from our tabling. And then we have upcoming a workshop on June 1st, so Wednesday next week. And that is going to be with the residents at Pearl Street Park, the senior housing complex. We distributed flyers to every unit today. They have 83 units in the building. And we're going to be operating that meeting in English, Haitian Creole, and Chinese. So that one, we still, if anyone would like to come as, be part of the note-taking team and listen to the conversation live, we'd love to have a few members of the CAC participate. So if anyone's interested, it's going to be Wednesday evening, starting at 6 o'clock. We estimated that it'll probably run until 7:30 or 8:00. We put eight as the end, like absolute end on the flyer. I expect we won't go quite that long though. It depends how many people we have in attendance. So think on that. If you're interested, let me know and we'd love to have you there. It should be a really interesting conversation. I wanted to, before we turn things over to all of the folks who, who were at all these various meetings, I wanted to just give you some quick updates on other conversations that we've been having. We had, Tom and I had a conversation with the property owner of the mobile site. They are still selling. We've talked to them about what their, sort of the various options might be in terms of timelines, right? So one option is that they could still sell to the city right now. That's been something that's been considered, they've considered in the past. They're definitely keeping an eye on what's happening with our project. But we also talked about the fact that they could, you know, look for a development partner on their own, that then that development partner, you know, their partner that they find for their site would, you know, likely apply when we have a plan for city site or that, you know, the mobile site owner might want to wait would be another option. And sort of see who ends up being the partner on the city redevelopment parcel and then work with them. So they are definitely engaged. They want to stay, they're staying focused on this process that we're going through and trying to figure out what they want to do. They, you know, we're sort of leaving it up to them how visible and active they want to be in the community process. But they definitely are aware of it and they are still in the process of selling. So I wanted to make sure I gave you all that update. Diana, yes?
Can you hear me? I just wanted to understand, is there any scenario in which the mobile station can just sell and do something else on their own? Or are they, they were going to be, you know, held to comply with whatever is going on here or the vision or the redevelopment plan here? Or can they just kind of proceed on their own with something?
They could. It's a limited, they're held to the current zoning if they were to pursue, proceed on their own. I think what we've been understanding here is that, you know, the, the options for something more creative and therefore potentially something that earns them more sort of may depend upon the sites being combined because it's a smaller site. Right? So there's that, that layer to it.
So they probably have an incentive to wait or cooperate or combine them or something?
Yeah, I think on the economics, it, the combination seems to be where there's probably the most value, but it's something they have, they have to weigh.
Thanks.
I will say, if, if, especially if you're not on video, if you wanted to drop a note in the chat to say, hey, I want to say something, that would be helpful. We would encourage everyone, of course, to turn on videos, but, because then we can see your hand also. But if you otherwise want to save, pipe up, please feel free to use the chat too. So we can make sure we call on everyone and get all the voices heard. The next conversation I wanted to highlight for everyone is, as noted, you know, we haven't, we still haven't been hearing, getting survey results in Spanish or Portuguese. We had a conversation Monday eve, no, Tuesday evening this week with the leadership at the Brazilian Presbyterian Church on School Street. And it was a good conversation. They actually provided a lot of interesting ideas themselves. One of the ideas that they brought up is, you know, what if it, what if it is just sort of like a really simple, sort of construction-wise simple, but like what about a food truck port or something like that? Something that is sort of more flexible as a design. The other thing that they're going to help with arrange is that on a Sunday during the summer, we are going, staff will go to their breakfast hours. And so we will set up a table and so we can get surveys out to their membership. Their membership don't all live locally, but they certainly all are worshiping locally and coming every week to this area. So we're excited about that, that which will sort of help raise awareness within the Portuguese-speaking community. Michelle, yes?
I just want to let, if you could loop me in onto that because I would love to be there. And I'm, since I speak Portuguese, I think, and I know a lot of the people actually go there. It'd be great, but just make sure that we coordinate dates because I am going away in July.
Okay, that's perfect. Yeah, because we would, I think, yeah, if you could be there, that you'll be them, we'll have you and then Adriana from our office. She's less familiar with the product, but we'll get her up to speed. The majority of their congregation much prefers to speak in Portuguese than in, than in English. But there are also, the younger generation, they were saying, is more comfortable in English than in, in Portuguese. So it'll be good if we have a few different members who can do both. And it's, it's early. It's like 8:00 AM. So that's fantastic. So we'll get, we will sort of up our participation in other languages. The other two pieces here I wanted to sort of flag are, for those who weren't able to attend the May, is it May? I think it was May when they, the stormwater meeting. Early May, there was a stormwater meeting talking about all the various projects in the watershed. The tank on the site we're talking about is one of those projects. It was a good conversation. There were two options that were laid out for the tank. One is a tank that is sort of a separated tank, so it's just rainwater. And, and then the other is that it's a combined sewer stormwater tank. Not so pleasant water.
Rachel?
Yes?
Sorry. You know, I'm doing this from my phone. I don't have the camera. Sorry, folks. And also I can't find, I don't have a chat thing. I just have a question thing. But for, for some reason, like sometimes the chat boxes there. So yeah, a couple of things on that, just to kind of throw into the mix. One of the things, you know, that we approved last council meeting was an easement by the, the MBTA to be allowed to, it's like a 15-foot easement or something like that. And basically the exchange was that we were able to tie into their, all, you know, all of their systems, including their drainage system. So, you know, there's a lot of discussions going on about how will that affect the size of the tank? You know, will the tank have to be that big? The other piece of the discussion that I have a board order and about a council order because I'm somewhat confused. And, you know, I know there's probably a reasonable answer, but if you went to those meetings, my understanding is conveyed to me that Gilman Square would be the last piece of the infrastructure puzzle in terms of the drainage. And so if you kind of did the math, that would put it at about, you know, 20 years from now, which clearly isn't going to work for all of what, you know, we're trying to do. I don't think that that's really necessarily the case, but I do think there is some timeline issues in terms of, you know, what they laid out, what Rich Raish laid out in terms of the, the tank and when it's going to go in. So that's just kind of a lingering question. I think you've been, you might be aware that we've been asking that question mainly because, you know, we haven't heard a, a timeline on the tank. So based on the math, it was like 20 years. Anyway, that said, maybe this drainage tie-in will affect the size of the tank, which will ultimately affect, you know, how much we can, what we can put on the site. So just wanted to add that to the conversation.
Thanks, counselor. It's really helpful to hear. The conversation we had with engineering most recently is that they're working on, trying to understand timeline right now. It's going to take them a couple of months to do that. But we're continuing those conversations and I wanted to just let you all know that that's part of the conversation we're going to be having around sort of timelines and our own processes is that to coordinate with the information we may need from them, we may have to wait a couple of months for that kind of key piece on the timeline for the tank. And then the last one I wanted to share is that we've continued to work with the RISD students who were helping out at that March 14th meeting. They have been following this project as part of a class and they just had their final this week. Really fantastic, interesting work. I'm working with the faculty there to figure out what we can share out with you all publicly. They have to sort of work through the, you know, through the university's process around publishing their work. But it's, they have some really cool ideas and so I'm hoping to sort of, whether we can share a summary or not share their graphics exactly, but share the sort of ideas that they had. I'm trying to figure out how we can do that, but some really fantastic thinking that's gone into this from those students. So if you met any of them at that first meeting, they are wrapping up their semester, but it was, it was really worthwhile. All right. So what I have sort of set up here is just blank templates to take some notes. I wanted to sort of just ask those who were able to be at each of those events if they wanted, could share what they heard for the group at each of the activities, sort of a quick summary of what you remember from the event. And I can, Melinda, to give you a little bit of a moment to think. Jamie, Jamie couldn't be here until a bit later, so she emailed me a thought so I can share her notes from Thursday first. So I wrote them down here. So she said there wasn't a ton of passersby. It was very cold that day. I don't know if anyone's going to remember that, but it was very, very cold for April. So she noted that she did go and drop off those flyers about the survey to do, take the survey online with a lot of the businesses. And so she encouraged them to do so. She went to Sarmah, Paradigm, Good Gas, The Yoga Studio. May or may not have seen Lisa into the salon, Neighborhood Produce, and a couple of others. So we don't have details about who participated from the businesses yet, but we'll see if anyone noted their business affiliation when we take a look at the notes.
So now my observations?
Yeah.
So the few times that I've been back to the dog park and seen a lot of people there, I still continue to try and encourage people to go online. I don't have flyers with me, but I tell them to go to Summer Vision and fill out the survey. Yeah, it was a little disappointing that day that there weren't a lot of people going by, except for one angry passerby in a car who got out and ranted to us about the city, which is somewhat amusing. But he had some good points too. Yeah, so it's, it is, it's harder to engage people than, you know, I thought it would be a little. Some people just kind of walked on, even if they lived in the area, they didn't want to talk to me. But others at the dog park definitely seem engaged, so I'll keep that up every time I'm there. I did want to say, sorry, Rachel, I can't be, I would love to go to Pearl Street Park with you, but I'm out of town on Wednesday, so I cannot do that.
Ram, any, any thoughts that you picked up from the Saturday tabling?
Yeah. The first thing I remember is that the people from Pearl Street Park, they were like, the guys about the issue. They, someone came over and then they were sending other people over to talk to us. They wanted to have, their main concern was to go back to the triangle of land for recreation. A lot of the, they don't get around very much and that's the only outside space that they can, that's, that's.
Rachel, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Oh.
Ram, do you mind sitting a little closer?
Can anyone hear me?
That's better.
Okay.
Yeah, so the people from Pearl Street Park wanted to go back to recreation, to the residential complex.
Ram, it sounds like your microphone is very muffled.
Oh. Is it any better?
Yes.
Not really better. It's really sounds kind of buzzy and dissolved feedback and stuff.
If I, I think if I try and summarize what you were saying, because I think I heard of most of it, can you just nod if I get it right or shake your head if I get it wrong?
Yeah.
So I think what you were saying is that we saw several of the Pearl Street Park residents. And, you know, one, we saw one or two, and then they sent more people over to come to the table. And then their, their sort of key point was that the Triangle Park is very well-used by the residents of Pearl Street Park. It's the only green space that many of the residents can access.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I think that was, that was really the big takeaway of the day. And Ram is saying one last thing in the chat, so this is helpful. We can read it out. And then Ram is also saying that there was a parent with, of young kids who came by that was very excited about the bike path coming in. I can also report because there was a while there where I was on my own. And unfortunately I had to leave before Diana was supposed to come join. So unfortunately we did have to cut the day a little bit short. But the mayor did stop by the table as well and she was visiting Matt Oyster Studios and out for the Open Studios Day. So it was a nice opportunity to sort of highlight the work that you all are doing for her. Counselor, do you want to jump in? I see you put something in the questions.
Oh no, I was just, when I was thinking back, when we were talking about the dog park, I was wondering if, it's a good place where people stand around and know, get some signs made with like a QR code on it or something. Just because they can attach it to the fence. It's our property. The other thing I was going to say is, I don't know, is there a way to elevate me? Like, am I, I just don't understand why I don't see the chat box. I know, you know, why my camera's not on when you're on the phone, but I don't see any, all I have is the question box, but. So I didn't know if it was a matter of attendee versus whatever, panelists or whatever, so. Anyway, either way, it's fine.
Yeah, you are a panelist, so I'm not sure what that is. I think it's a, we have to do some research on.
I'll, I'll even come back in.
That might just be a go-to problem. But yeah, I will, I'm going to add that to our notes right now and see if we can do the sign.
I had a similar issue when I was on the phone, on my mobile as well, so I think it's a go-to problem.
Okay, that's good to know. Counselor, I don't know if you can hear us again yet, but. I think was it Michelle who was just saying that she had the same problem last time she was on her mobile? All right. The midday workshop, I think Casey, you were there. Any reflections?
I think I should go back to my notes if we can come back to me.
Sure.
Thank you.
I can cover Fabville quickly. So Fabville, we had a smaller group, but I did talk to a few people. Generally, a lot who were sort of, it was an event that was more citywide and was in the neighborhood. So I think a lot of people were just sort of getting up to speed. There really wasn't a lot of direct comment. But the one person I talked to was really excited about biking and was noting that the bike connections are a bit tricky through, through the square right now. And so I think they were looking forward to the bike path, but then also thinking about how do people get to and from the bike path from other places in the neighborhood? They also noted that the bike, like maintenance of places that people are biking is important. They were, the person was commenting that, you know, while a pothole is annoying for a driver, a pothole is quite dangerous for someone who, this person was older. And they're saying, as an older person who bikes, a pothole could be quite dangerous.
Rachel? I, yeah, so I wasn't able to go to the Open Studios one because I know you had to cancel, but it sounded like you had a lot of people that joined beforehand. But I think I could go this Wednesday to Pearl Street if you want to have some extra people. And I did sit through all three stormwater infrastructure meetings out of curiosity. So I heard all that. It was a lot.
I'm impressed. Casey, do you want to go next or should we go to Michelle first?
Yeah, I can. Oh, sorry, I thought I was muted. So I can't find my notes, but now that I've had a second to just try to remember it. I think I remember, and you can probably help me, I remember a lot of discussion around like entry points and like, like where, where there would be access to the T and like where should the access be? I feel like that was like a very hot topic of discussion. I don't, I don't know that there was like consensus that I remember. And then I do think folks were echoing the desire for like, for food options. I feel like that came up a few different times. Those are, those are the two things I remember most.
Riz, I did, I copied in one sheet from the, from the group that had sort of more unique ones.
Okay.
We, we had, I did, we do have a full jam board for this group and when we do a collection of all the documents, I'll put it together.
Yeah.
But one of the things that stood out from here was sort of a couple of things, like blue bikes got called out.
Yeah.
A desire for another blue bike station. Connecting with the Brazilian and Haitian businesses was called out as a concern that, you know, we might not have reached everybody. But there were a couple of people, the, you know, it was a small group, but the folks who did show up were like, you know, this was really great to be able to do this because they couldn't usually attend evening meetings.
Right, yeah. I remember that. I thought that, that folks were very engaged though. There was a lot of participation at this one. There was a lot of participation at this one.
Michelle, I'm going to turn it to you next. I think you, you have the notes from both you and Jennifer, right?
Oh, I do. All right, so we had a really great.
One second first. Counselor, you had a question before we go to Michelle?
Yeah, no, just in general, I go wait till after, Michelle.
Okay, Michelle, you're up.
So we had a great meeting with the D Lab students, that Wednesday. And they brought some concerns and some great ideas to us. I'm just going to give you guys just a general idea. I'm going to try and make it, give you a synopsis, because there was a lot, a really great discussion with, from them. And a lot of it has to do with teen space. And what are the parameters of teen space here in Summerville? That, you know, there's not really that many places for kids to hang out anymore. Union Square, which was a popular hangout, isn't very kid-friendly or teenage-friendly these days. And they feel like that has a lot to do with the, with bars, actually. That was a topic that I was kind of, had never heard of before. That, so I thought was interesting that they feel like the population of additional bars in one square or area tends to make it very non-teenage-friendly. So that was something that they wanted us to be aware of when we were considering Gilman Square. Another thing that they brought up was a lack of food options for the teenagers. So if a teenager up at the high school really only has the convenience store and Dunkin' Donuts, and now they do have Brianna's Cafe down, down the hill, which just opened. And Jennifer wanted me to mention that it was great and everyone should go check it out. So there's that. And they want to make sure that they might be, the best thing to do might be to like, actually make teen hours so that the kids feel welcome. They talked a lot about the parameters of like, when does teen space become like a public nuisance? When might police be called? But on the other hand, they, you know, you need to also make it fun for the kids, but in a way that they can also be respectful and that they feel respected. An interesting quote was that adults sometimes feel entitled. So even if it is an area that's dedicated to teens and, you know, an adult might just come in and just, just take it over. But I think they just wanted to have a sense of respect. They came up with also some great ideas about maybe running some low cost or free events because teenagers, you know, might not have a lot of money, may not be working. That maybe we could have college students or other teenagers be hired to maintain the property. And maybe not make it something like a program where you need to sign up for six weeks to make it something where you just might be able to drop in. And it may only be a certain amount of hours, or it may be whatever it is that we think, you know, the program would allow for. Just saying with quick notes, oh, they also said, make sure we make it fun. And they liked the idea of the swings, of swings, and to also try and make it shady and hopefully also be able to be used in the winter. So they also came up with the idea of an interactive app, like a Boston Calendar for teenagers, which we might, we might be able to use to like publicize events if we decide to make this a teen space. I think that's pretty much it. Anything else, Rachel?
Take a look at my notes, too. You guys had much more extensive notes because I was talking. One of the things we talked about in sort of this, sort of things that I've been thinking about as we've been having this conversation with the teens is that, you know, there's a broader teen concept, teen space conversation happening across the city. Whether or not this location ends up being one of those designated teen centers, there will always be teenagers that are passing through this space because it's just so close to the high school. That there's always going to be teens around. And what I mentioned to them was that, you know, there's, that we're going to have this conversation with the seniors also, right, next week? And that, like navigating this, you know, seniors living right there, teens wanting a space that they can be a bit louder, like, that's going to be a relationship to manage a little bit. As this next phase of the Green Line opening and everything, the teens sort of wandering more down the hill, right? Because right now, they're all arriving on the bus up on Highland, and suddenly they're going to be arriving on the Green Line a little bit further down the hill. And that might change their relationship with Gilman. I'm looking to see if there's anything else that stood out. They did have an interesting one also about the idea of paying teens to be responsible for the space and looking for ways for teens to have employment there. They would be excited about that.
Rachel, related to the teen spaces, is there any more information on whether the YMCA is still interested in the site? Because that would be a great, you know, hangout for the teens if they have a pool and other stuff.
Yeah, the YMCA is still interested. They're, you know, exploring, they're still exploring a lot of the details, and we're going to keep in conversation with them. So I owe them an email to kind of check in and see how their design thinking is going. Because there's a lot of, a lot of thinking that they have to do around, you know, what programs they want in their space. And then there'll be a matching process to see if we can figure out how to fit everything that they want on this, on the site. They are very much still interested in the location.
Great.
Rachel, one other thought, just hearing what you were saying about negotiating the teen senior proximity. I, one like, sort of like yes and thought is like, it would, it could be a really nice opportunity for some sort of like intergenerational, like events or whatever the right term is. But that's something that's really like wonderful in a community, and it doesn't have to just be teens and seniors. It's a lot of other age groups that could be a part of that. But there could just be some cool opportunities there eventually.
Yeah, I think that's, it was really interesting also that, one of the things they pointed out is they do want some designated space where like, they can just be. But what the, sort of their faculty advisors were telling us is that they're, they're part, this group is part of this bigger citywide conversation around teen spaces with an S, right? And that like, there will be different locations around the city. Some will end up with, you know, because not all teens are the same either, right? But like, some quiet spaces, some lively spaces, some more active spaces. So there's going to be a net, at some point, what they're aiming for, and they're very much advocating for, is a network of spaces. They did a workshop with, it was like 200 kids, came to a workshop that they managed. So they have a pretty good understanding of what they've been working on. They are working on a final write-up of sort of outcomes and the summary of their, of that event. So we've asked them to share that with us as soon as it's ready. It sounded like that should be ready in the next week or so, so we can add that into all the raw material that we'll all be discussing.
Rachel, I, going back to our day outside in April, and the gentleman who jumped out of his car, just to reiterate his point, it was, he was concerned with traffic. So he's anxious for Medford Street to open up and School Street to open up again. So not to say that he was just angry, he was, had some desires for the space as well. I don't remember if we actually talked to him about the fact that Medford Street might open but then close again. But I know that that's still a topic for discussion, correct?
Yeah, still for discussion.
So yeah, Rachel, if I could just jump in, that was, sorry, that was, you know, basically that was my question. Is that through any of these events, has anybody been asking about Medford Street and School Street, but particularly Medford Street? So that was, that was kind of what my question was.
Yeah, so I can fill in a little bit if it's okay, Michelle, before, all right? So the bridge is still going to open to traffic. We still don't have an exact date when. School Street, I walked up today, and it is very much has holes in it, so it's not quite ready. I think your, a car would be swallowed, so not quite yet. But they are both expected to open, I'd still, I believe still ahead of the Green Line itself opening. When it comes to the bigger, bigger picture visioning for Medford Street Bridge, what we've been talking about, the Mobility Division is leading that effort. But what we've been talking about there is that it will open, the Medford Street Bridge should, will open to traffic. That way, we can have a really thoughtful conversation around what, what I closed, what converted Medford Street Bridge would look like. And the idea is that we would have this sort of as a phased-in experience, so that, to start that engagement, to do some short-term closures, like pop-up events, maybe for a day or two. And then maybe we move that from a day or two to like a week or two. And then we see if there's still momentum and interest in moving to a full-time closure. So that's where things end. It's still, we're still working on figuring out, you know, timeline when this conversation would happen. Part of this, we're going to be talking actually about that next week, around sort of what's the timeline there versus what's the timeline we're on versus what's the timeline that, you know? We'll just have to wait a couple of months still for the Stormwater conversations. But sort of how do we piece all these together is, is what's coming up. Michelle, you had a question also?
You just answered, I was actually going to see if there's any more details about the time.
Yeah, that's the, that is becoming the tricky piece of all this, is just figure out where we are in time with each of these elements and where they influence each other. I'm anticipating a giant whiteboard in my future.
So Rachel, Rachel, I mean, I put you on the spot, because I know you're not necessarily the point person, but you're in the conversations more than I am. You know, it's kind of gotten away from me, this Medford Street thing. And I know, I'm not talking about the Maker Space and all stuff. I'm talking about how do we go from, what happened with the March 21st date for the Memphis? Like, do you know what happened there?
There. I think I have it right, but I might be getting this completely wrong, so I want to preface it with this. I could still be very off on this. I can double-check, Counselor, and send you an email. I believe what happened was that there was a water pipe issue that needed to be resolved, and they needed to do pipework. And reopening to traffic would slow down the pipework.
Okay, that's fine. I just, like I said, it was, you know, multiple different departments, you know, came up with that date, that was the, the date. So anyway, I just need something to tell people when they're asking me. I haven't got a chance to catch up there. Thank you.
Let me write that down and see if I can find an answer for you from engineering. Actually, it's probably Mobility, but I'll check up both. Okay, any other thoughts while we're still here with these sort of summaries of what's been going on? Questions from anyone who wasn't at one of these events, feel free to jump in if you've got one. Okay, so seeing none. Next thing I have on the list to touch base on is just how to pull all of this together and start to summarize what we've been hearing. And so the sort of things I have on this thought process are, there's a lot of raw material to share with you all. Right, we've got 51 survey answers, we've got jam boards from, you know, the five groups on March 14th and the group in May, to six jam boards, 51 survey responses. And then all of these notes from all the various events. So what I was thinking, so I have an Excel spreadsheet of the jam boards, the original five jam boards. I have not yet had a chance to add in the May 11th ones, but can do that. And then we'll add to that also the ones from next week, because we'll do the same exercise in person with the group next week at Pearl Street Park. So there's, there's those pieces, and then, so that can all be in an Excel format. And then I was wondering if you all wanted the surveys sort of individually summarized. But I was, my thought on this is that basically there's a lot of material to get in all of your hands, so you can read it and see if you find other conclusions. And then that we start to look at sort of quantitatively, but also qualitatively, what are the, what are the standout points? And start to bring this into some form of report out document that we can share with the rest of the community to say, okay, we've done this, you know, six-plus weeks of listening. Here's what everybody said, just so that we can have that touch point with the, the community to say, this is everything we've been hearing. Are there anything that would be really helpful? Like, if you're thinking about this exercise, is there anything that you can think about would be really helpful to you in terms of how you received that information or how to process that?
I think, I think maybe this is not the right time for that. But one thing that will be helpful in reporting out to the public is having a good map of the site that shows where the train connections are going to be now and where they could be later. And what were people's comments about, you know, various connections like from Richdale and things like that, so that they can really look at it and see. And maybe it also, like a 3D map that shows the site grade, you know, and the, the challenge of the grade going up to the train. I mean, that's tricky, but it would probably be useful for people to see.
I would just echo that. This is Casey, I just went off video. Even, even like a video could be helpful. Like, I feel like I have a good handle on a lot of the themes with how people might want to use the space. But all the different combinations of like entrances and all that, I think maybe other people are following better than me. But I'm also thinking if I'm confused, maybe other people are confused. It could just be nice, I feel like that's important, and I just echo that, that's a good point, echoing that.
Right, or even just like, the whole 3D model, it goes like the flat, the flat site, and then the bank of the, going up to the train. And the, the grade along School Street, and just as a static video, I mean, a static model, but relax on a metric that people could look at, that would help too and be simpler.
Yeah, this is where the, we've got to work with the RISD group on what they can publish. They did a really great job of documenting that in three dimensions. And I just, really hoping that very soon they'll let us, they'll let us start showing off all of the great work that they did. Michelle, and then there's a question in the comments, so Michelle, go first.
Oh, I also think it might be helpful to do some like, kind of spreadsheet where we could maybe put together some of the most common themes that we've heard. And also then show in what forums those themes came up. So let's just say, for example, there's been a lot of talk about needing food, like a food space or a restaurant. So that came up in, you know, the forum that we did online, that also came up with the teenagers. It might come up with another group, just so we can see what the commonality is of when the themes arise.
So first, I'm just going to read off the things we have in the chat, too. So Brittany said she agrees that the visuals of, visuals of frequently mentioned ideas could help with the next phase for weighing in on. And then, Ram, you had a question about the schedule? Is that scheduled for the meetings? Oh, on the Green Line. The summer, we're still getting the same answer on the Green Line. They're still saying summer for opening the Green Line. That's all we've gotten. I will say that there's, I think for everyone here, right, that there's a separation in my, I'm anticipating a separation of when the Green Line opens and when they restore the site. Right? So right now, the site, our site is where all of the Green Line construction laid down spaces. They will restore that to, I believe it's going to just be a gravel. Like restore it to a gravel flat area. So I am anticipating the station will open, but they're still going to be doing little like tweak, you know, little final steps after service starts. So I've not been asking about when the date of like giving us back the site is until we get past the opening of the service because that's more important. But once we get to that point, we'll, we'll start to ask them how we how they button up the site and hand it back over. So I don't think that will happen this summer. I think that will happen probably more like fall.
And what does that mean for our planning? I mean, once it goes back to kind of gravel? Do we do things in that space?
We could. I think that's a question to think about is once it's going to be tricky, but we may not have. I don't know when we'll have access and that's the hard part is to plan. Really, I don't want us to plan a fall event in that space and then not have the space. But I wouldn't expect by next springtime that that space is hopefully available to us. I mean, this is all conjecture. It's all sort of vague until they give us more information, but at some point, the site does come back to the city and that's where there's an opportunity to start thinking about, you know, do we do events in the space to try and get more people excited about it? The Gilman Square Neighborhood Association, they've got a big party planned for the fall that they do every year. They, they will be doing that again at Matt Oyster Studios parking lot like they did last year. But, you know, that's the kind of thing, it's a big block party, right? Like, that's the kind of thing that maybe could be on the site. We could do, I mean, there's all kinds of things you can do on a, on a big gravel area. Timeline is just the question. This is really, really helpful. Any other thoughts before we turn to sort of looking ahead to the next couple of months?
Hey, Rachel, I just had one other thing that could be helpful for context. You even mentioned, like when we were talking about the teens, that there's sort of like an ongoing citywide conversation. If there is anything else like that, where there's like additional kind of citywide context that might be helpful, that could be good to include.
I'll throw the Stormwater Master Plan on that same list.
Is it, is it premature to provide the public with like imagery or of prototype things like here's, here's an example of an outdoor plaza next to a cafe, or here's, here's how big a new YMCA might be, or here's, you know, how much space an apartment building might take up, that kind of thing, or is that for later?
I think that's sort of the step after this one. Or maybe even two steps after. So my understanding, my sense of this is that like one step is, okay, we've heard, we've had six weeks of listening. Sort of giving the report out of like, here's what we heard, right? And I like where a lot of people are saying like, along with that, it sounds like maybe we should include a this is what this site is. This is a little, you know, like a couple of pages maybe on just what this project is and what the context is. That's what I'm reading from all the comments people have been making. And then sort of after that, we need another step where it's like, okay, digesting all of those comments that we heard, here's what some of those things might mean. I see those as probably two separate steps, just because it's going to take a lot longer to do that, that investigation. And it'd be nice to get something out to the community just to say, okay, we've, this is what we've heard. This is how you're, what you said in one of those events fits in with everything else that people have been saying.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
Just, just, I'm thinking about the context stuff. I know that, I forget the name of the consulting firm that we heard from a while ago. Like, I think one other thing is like, as we're kind of synthesizing what people are interested in, it's like, I don't want to be limiting and say like, well, what's possible or like how much is possible? Like, I think we could do a lot of things, but like, I have no concept of like, can you fit a coffee shop there? Like, I think yes, but like, I don't know, just some general like parameters from them could be helpful.
Yeah, that's actually, that's really helpful. I think, I actually talked with Tom, I talked with them today, and one of the things that they were saying in that conversation was, you know, it's helpful to them to start with the vision. Right? So sort of on the opposite end, right, that if it's helpful for them to hear the vision, like the concepts people are excited to explore. And that way they can then do that further investigation and come back with, okay, if you want that, this is how it might work in this site.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So I think there's sort of that, that's where like, as we're just talking about, there's that two stage piece, right? There's the, okay, here's everything we've heard. And then there's, okay, now given everything we've heard, we're going to spend some time really investigating those, those core ideas that people are, that seem to be resonating. And we're going to investigate this further and we'll report back with a lot more research. So I have next on this list, if it's all right with folks, I can jump to it. The next thing I have on this is actually sort of a tentative calendar of how that might play out. And I wanted to walk it through and see if that feels comfortable for everyone. Or if the timeline needs to adjust a little bit. So on the summer, look ahead, this is, I had sort of, I just wanted to sort of put this back out there. As we've been talking about, there's a lot of these topics that we know we need to do more research. So this was the list that we'd had sort of at the end of last meeting. And so just wanted to put that out there that there is a lot of research work that we know we need to do. And the list that we're distilling is going to be part of that. Already, some of the things that we've been talking about, we've added to this list. Like especially the YMCA, that Stormwater Coordination piece, the teen space I've added in to this list. And we need to add a lot more and we can come back to this. I just wanted to show you this next one as well. As we have this conversation. So how I've been seeing it, as we've, as I sort of have mentioned in the last few minutes are, there's sort of two stages at this point to move forward. One is reporting out and sort of putting to a close this community ideas gathering stage. And then we sort of turn to digesting the questions and the ideas raised in this last period. And so we can sort of distill that towards a vision. And so the concluding step that I think we would be working towards in each case is one is some sort of communication, sort of concluding this current phase, putting out some sort of communication that sort of outlines all the, you know, all the commentary we've heard. What we foresee as the findings and the next steps. And add to that all the things you all just said about, you know, deep, you know, what is the site and what's the context of it? And then sort of phase two being that we sort of move, look more towards the fall to give a little bit of time to do that research in our office. HRNA is helping with that research, but a lot of it, it does fall on our team as well. And so we do need a little bit of time to devote to it. And one of the things that's challenging is to actually do the research at the same time setting up community events that both take a lot of bandwidth. Michelle?
I'm just looking at your timeline. Can I just make a recommendation? The summertime is really difficult with vacations and people being out of town. And especially when the kids are out of school, the kids don't go back until August 31st this year. I would just suggest maybe a sidewalk after the kids are back and all the vacations are over. Just think you might have a better attendance.
Yeah, that was a question, actually. I did want to check in and we can do a sidewalk on a date that's not one of these Thursday nights, if, if that works for everybody. We can do a doodle poll, but there might be something to that because again, if the Green Line does actually open, that will give us a different vantage point, right? Because we can stand on the platform, we can walk on the stairs, we can stand on the bike path, you know, all those different perspectives, whereas right now, I mean, I was just down there this morning and you can't, there's no sidewalk along the edge of the site. Right? And so it's a little tricky. One thing that that would also do in this timeline in terms of dates would be that we could then spend June and July when people might be out on vacation or not, doing that distilling into this outreach document, this sort of conclusion document that we send off to the community. And that way, maybe that gives a little bit more discussion time if folks feel like it's needed to use both June and July for that purpose and then publish sort of at the beginning of August and say, okay, we've been spending the summer, you know, the spring doing all this great outreach. Here's where we're at. We'll be back in October with a community meeting. Any other thoughts? Does that sound, does that sound better than what's on the screen?
Yes.
I think so. Is the, I'm sorry, is the survey still open? Can people still go and be filling out the survey? Is that?
Yeah, we have left it open. We can close it, but we can also continue to leave it open until, I think especially since this Presbyterian Church conversation, I'd love to leave, at least the result, like the Portuguese one open. So maybe we do leave them all open a little bit longer. But we could start with the material we have, I think in June and really diving in. Today was a really good start too, just to kind of collect it all in one place in terms of everyone's thoughts.
Is there, if we, if we release something about, I'm just thinking in terms of so people see, this is what everybody's saying, this is what everybody wants. And then you have other people who maybe haven't been paying attention suddenly saying, wait a minute, is that what we're going to do? And then people might, so it might be two periods where people can kind of start express themselves from the community?
For sure. Yeah, I think that's a great point. We there's sort of a there are layers to engagement, right? That like some people get really excited early on and some people, they have to see something to get excited.
Or be annoyed by something to react.
Exactly. Yeah. And so they may not catch it until they see something like if there, we, there really haven't been a lot of headlines on this. I don't think we've seen a lot of press following. So if we were to get to the point where that happens, then we can be like, look, we've been doing all of this. We want to show you where we're at, but we'll still take community and get feedback at that point.
I think if you, if you postpone the, that releasing that distillation of information until late summer or fall, it'll also, it might give it, might allow us to have more information about the stormwater tank or the wastewater tank and YMCA and other things like that, that are like inputs into the site, you know, because it seemed, the tank in particular, it seems like it could be a huge wrench in terms of where you can put a building if it's not going to be built for 20 years or something. So that might be a good thing to into that summary if we have it by then.
Yeah, I think I've been aiming for, we'll definitely have that. My goal is that we don't have that sort of next community meeting until we have that answer. So that may affect the timeline, but I think that's, it's a good idea point. We can see maybe, and maybe they'll have more information for us. You know, by the time we get to our July meeting, since our meeting is at the end of July. I did suggest in this calendar that we might want to cancel August. That is the last week of August that we would be meeting. And I know that's a very popular time for people to be away. And Ron, I think, actually, I know, I saw your note in the chat, Ron, about June 23rd. June 23rd is the Thursday. The 24th is Friday this year. I think what I'm seeing is that we move sidewalk to September. Do it as more of a Green Line celebration.
Hopefully.
Counselor, did I miss something you were saying?
Nope.
So are you saying that there would not be a CAC meeting in June and July, or we would still meet?
We would still meet. I think that's, that's what I was seeing is that those are the two, those are, we would use those two meetings to discuss amongst the group, how to, how to organize this. And make sure that we're my goal is always that you all agree that we are with how we represent what we hear from the community, right? And so the goal is that as a group, the fact that you all represent, you know, different perspectives and different voices in, in the local group, in the local community, that you all have that opportunity to shape and really be that, that filter on what we've been hearing from folks. So I think it's something that we've always seen that these sort of summaries are something that comes from the CAC, not from staff. And so the idea is that we'll send you all of the raw data in all the raw materials, but that then in those two meetings, that you all are really driving how we shape what gets placed and sort of what's priority one, so far that we're hearing what's priority three and make sure that we're reflecting everything that you all have heard, since you all are really right there with us, hearing everything from the community. And I'll just, Ron, is it okay if I read your note out loud?
Yes.
So Ron added in the chat that he thinks the distillation meetings would be, would still be useful, especially if we have the RISD input, since that sounds exciting. So if that is seeming all right with folks, I will move ahead with this calendar that we all just talked about. And that we look at September as our sidewalk. We'll experience the Green Line as a group and then we'll spend June and July thinking about what this document is in the green. And then in the background, staff will be looking towards this next one. So if it's all right with folks, I'd like to give a moment for public comment if there is any before we get to the end. Is there anything else from the committee members before we do that? Okay, seeing nothing. If there's any interest in making public comment now would be the time, again, the options are to raise your hand or type something into the chat.
I just wanted to add one more thing.
Yes, go ahead.
One of the things, I think you alluded to it, was that people wanted affordable food options. And I think you mentioned that the high school students also wanted affordable food options. And so that might be a little incompatible, that's the kind of development that might go into that site. So it that, but it seems like it's something that you should keep in mind while trying to develop that site. I think pizza, pizza is mentioned a lot.
Yeah, I think coffee I've heard several times and ice cream I've heard several times as well.
Yeah, ice cream too. Yeah, and coffee.
Actually, remembering as, Ron, as you were saying this, that there was, one of the gentlemen that stopped by when we were out there was saying that one of the ice cream places that is closest to the site, Louise, which is up on, was up on Broadway, they've closed and it's been a while since they've closed. And there hasn't been another ice cream place open on the East Somerville side. There's Tipping Cow.
Yeah.
Further up. Yeah.
Permanently closed? It usually closes just for the winter. So I don't know if it's permanently closed.
It's, I don't know.
Yeah.
It's permanently closed. I mean, I think all the equipment's still there. They're, they were, had tried for the last couple of years to try to sell it as an ice cream place. And it's just haven't worked out. Of course, COVID was smack in the middle of all that.
Yeah, Brittany brings up a good point that Tipping Cow is really pretty close. Yeah, I mean, I feel like I would be like, it would be a little bit upsetting to put an ice cream shop a couple of blocks from Tipping Cow, especially given that it's a black owned business. I feel like that would be not great. The other thing I think we were reflecting on, or I was reflecting on when Michelle and Jennifer and I were with the high school students was that sit-down restaurants might be part of their, their reaction to Gil, to Union Square. Is that in Union Square, there aren't very many like grab and go places. And then there's not a lot of outdoor seating to take a grab and go thing, if you do get a grab and go thing. And for someone who's 16, going into a waiter situation by yourself with your friends feels a little bit, you know, one, it's the cost and two, there's the, like, there's the added cost of it being a waiter service location. And then there's the like, learning how to engage with waiters and tip appropriately and all that, that they're still learning. Yeah, Michelle?
Just add on to that, that most of the time the kids would be eating would be at lunch as well. So there are also time constraints with that.
Right. And there's nothing in Gilman right now that's open at lunchtime?
Except for Brianna's.
So we'll have to see. I think that's a good question. We can ask them as they get up and running a little bit is do they see a high school crowd coming down? We might not see that really until September, just because of the timing of the school year and the fact that they're just opening. I think they're sort of really just getting going in the last maybe week or two. So it may take a little bit before the high school students really find them en masse. Anything else before we bring the evening to a close? And I will put also another call for public comment if there is any. And so seeing none, I think that brings us to a conclusion for the evening. Thank you all once again for a really great conversation. Every time, I'm really impressed with how much you all are bringing in terms of note taking and all these activities and great commentary. Okay. And so then we will reconvene in June. I will send material ahead of time and I'm going to give myself a deadline to do that before I leave for vacation on June 10th. So my goal is to get you all the material by June 10th so that you can be thinking about it and absorbing and reading it. So when we get to June, our June meeting, that there's a time to really talk it, we'll just be focused on talking through and putting things in in sort of a documented format that is good to send out to folks.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Thanks.
Thanks, Rachel.
Have a great evening.
Thank you. Bye.